Thank you. Action at this time because we did not finish. All right. Item number seven, this is public comment. Public participation is limited to those items listed on the agenda. If your comments do not concern an item listed on this agenda, please address the city council at the next regular meeting. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanders, profane, or disruptive remarks. Council members recognized by the mayor may ask questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken by the city council during the public comment section of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item listed on the posted agenda. Please speak into the microphone from the podium to put him electronically just up and down to accommodate the speaker. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the city as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies. These become public record. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Since council isn't able to take action on any issues on the agenda, you may be referred to staff for follow-up or be placed on a future agenda. Public comment period is not intended to be a question and answer period or conversation with council or city staff. I will open public comment at this time.
Jan Osborne, Wairika. And I'm here tonight to request that no action be taken under new business. On the item that's listed on the agenda. It says, or I said, taken to expend resources to says, I think, develop a ballot measure, but what the agenda actually says is expend the resources for the developed ballot measure revenue options for the YFD. I don't know exactly what that means. So that's not the only reason I'm requesting that. I feel that I, as a taxpayer and a citizen of this city, do not have enough information to be jumping to a ballot measure before it has even been established that we need more money. On my utility bill, every month I'm assessed what's called the fire tax. Eight dollars and fifty-three cents now. It was six something in two thousand and seven. It was seven dollars and something. But it goes up every year. And that is based on the passage by the voters in Wairika of Measure H in November of two thousand and six. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. So you'll, this is probably something you already know, but for me, the important part of that says, this is section seven from Resolution number twenty-five oh three in the ballot information, which I received from Reda Hogan. She emailed this to me and it had the language. The express and specific purpose for which this special tax is levied is to establish a stable source of funds within the city in order to fund training, wages, and benefits of firefighters, acquire firefighting or rescue equipment or vehicles, and improve or construct fire stations, substations, or training facilities. Any funds collected from the special tax levy pursuant to this resolution shall be expended only for such purposes and no other. Any unexpended funds raised by the levy remaining at the end of the fiscal year shall be carried over for the same purposes in the next fiscal year. A special account shall be created by the city and such funds shall be deposited in said account. An annual report complying with Government Code Section five zero zero seven five point three shall be made to the city council showing the amount of the funds collected and expended and the status of the project funded. Now, there's a lot more, but those were the things, those were the purpose, that was the purpose of that. And so I'm wondering, and my question to the people at City Hall was, how much money is in that fund now? And unfortunately, I didn't have the agenda till Friday. Office was closed Friday, so it was Monday. And I was told I would have to submit a public information request form and they would have ten days to reply to that. Well, that was not soon enough for this meeting, so I don't know how much money is in that account. But until I do, I am not going to be satisfied with trying to put a sales tax on the people of Wairika or the people who travel here. To me, the focus should be at this time on the medical calls. That's what Chief Lemus has really reiterated and the graphs show the big blue line and then the little orange thing that the orange evidently firefighting and the blue, the medical calls. The focus should be on how to reduce those. What are those calls? That's an exorbitant number. I've heard between eighteen hundred and two thousand medical calls. So I'm requesting a breakdown of the medical calls, just to see. I mean, are these all life-threatening emergencies? Why are we going out of eighteen hundred calls a year, three hundred and sixty-five days a year? You can do the math. That's quite a few calls every day. We should also focus on how to reduce those medical calls or even eliminate them. There are possibilities for doing that.
All right. Thank you.
Is that my time?
It is. Thank you.
Can I come back before the resolution finishes?
I don't.
Are you gonna have public comments?
We'll have public comment, I think, I believe so. Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is the city manager. I just wanted to remind those in the audience that ultimately public comment at this period is for things that are not listed on the agenda. And so if there, this item that was just discussed is definitely listed on the agenda. So everybody will have an opportunity to discuss the fire hall and the presentations by Mr. Lemus and myself. And then ultimately, the very final item will have more public comment on item number ten, new business agenda title, twenty twenty-four November ballot measure discussion.
You must have a lot better.
Lorenzo Love, Wairika resident. Public participation is limited to those items listed on the agenda. All right. What the fire department needs most are paramedics. The city has a balance of something like thirty-seven million dollars. Spend some of that, hire some paramedics. Three to four million dollars would give you nine or ten paramedics. You could have two on a shift, twenty-four seven. But you're not doing that. Why are you starving the fire department? Hire some paramedics. You're deliberately starving the fire departments to have an excuse for a sales tax that's gonna go in the general fund where you can use it for anything you want to. Do what the fire department needs. Spend some money on them.
Thank you.
So actually, just wanna go back to those statements. So in this instance, I am getting commentary from the city attorney that ultimately we're gonna do it reverse with the special meeting. So if you do have special, if you do have public comment, ultimately, unless you guys wanna change this, I don't know, you need to talk to your attorney. But it's all going to come at the start of the meeting. So, Mr. Jared, is that accurate?
Yeah, he didn't. I didn't hear anything like that, so.
That's correct. Special meetings, the, their only items listed on the agenda can be discussed in public comment. As the way that this agenda is crafted, now is the time to take all public comment on the items on the agenda for that would be for special presentations, new business of those items listed on the agenda. Thank you.
All right. So we're taking public comment on the agenda item for that's before you. So everybody come up and talk.
For the fire department, as is Lorenzo. We are not for money spent unnecessarily. We are not for money that this council controls. Because you all might be honorable and I might could trust you. But when you're gone, who's going to control that purse? Who's going to give that money to our fire department? Because not one of you people are gonna put our house out if it's on fire. They are. So we need this, but we need control of this and we need better control of this. So this tax measure needs to be written in a much secure way.
Thank you.
Don East, Wairika. And I know that my job is to speak to the city council, but I'm gonna talk loud enough so the people behind me might hear what I wanna say to you folks. I'm afraid I'm part of the blue line problem from what she talked about earlier. I know some of you know me from before, but I have had six heart attacks. I have survived them all. And part of the reason I have is these gentlemen and people I think that might hear me behind me. They have been a huge part. Every time I've had somebody come to my house to pick me up and take me to the hospital, they've been kind, they've been gentle, they've been considerate. Sometimes they've had to come in and haul me out of the bedroom. Other times I've been able to meet them outside. But if there's any group that I have to say absolutely wonderful things about, it's the police department and the fire department. They are absolutely doing their job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for comment?
Greetings. I don't think they had that when I was here before. Rob Bichego, Wairika. So I've sat where you are sitting right now before. I've also sat where the guys behind me in uniform are sitting right now. And some of us are retired from the fire department and here. So I have something in my pocket here. It's my accountability check. Remember what that looked like? So it's a little bit, it's not exactly straight and it's a little bit smoked up and it gets a little warm sometimes when I was wearing it. What I don't miss is the pager at night. And I'll tell you who else doesn't miss it. My wife doesn't miss it. So the problem is, we're always focused on one half of us. There's the other half also. There's the family too. When the pager would go off and you'd leave it on all night long. Why? Medicals would drive me nuts. But if I was the person going, I'd be going. And if it wasn't my turn for medicals, the pager would still be on. Okay, because I don't know if it's a structure fire or a traffic issue or something else. So the pager would go off no matter what. Every night, every night. When I first gave the pager up, it just felt weird. I mean, right? It just felt strange. It's like, oh, you could sleep through the night. What a surprise. Medicals are a huge, huge problem. And these guys are dedicated people. They're gonna go, but they're being burned out. And I know it's not an easy answer, one way or the other. I would just hope that, that you look at, at it as maybe a restricted fund. So you respond to some of the people that had issues. I know we've had an issue before with the pool, mentioned the P word, but you know, and that was, that didn't really sit very well. So you know, one way to fix that is, is to make sure that it says restricted fund issue or at least some good portion of it. I understand that's not gonna sit well with some of you. I heard the comment about Measure H. And I was on the fire department and they passed Measure H. Oh my God, everyone was like breathing a sigh of relief. Yeah, and it had a lot of things that were listed in there. I get it, you know, I mean, that's how, that's how it wound up being, but hopefully, maybe Trace. I'm gonna, hopefully he'll come up here shortly. He'll tell you about Measure H a little bit and, and exactly where the funds went and, and how expensive that equipment is when you talk about new engines and stuff. I mean, it's just, and, and the reason why there's a buildup of funds so that the next big piece of equip, well, I'm not gonna steal on your thunder. I'm gonna stop. I want Trace to talk about it, but I just wanted you to, I just wanted you to know that there's, there's a human element here and there's another half of this, of this accountability tag. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanna get a point of clarification from Chief Lemus and that is, chief, do you have members of the past and present volunteer organization that will speak during your presentation? Okay, they don't need to come up at this time. Okay, thank you.
He's clarifying.
So yeah, I think if you're a part of the fire department, you are a part of Jerry's presentation and you'll have an opportunity to weigh in at that time for Jerry's presentation.
Okay, so that's clarified. So fire department come down after Jerry's presentation. Anybody else in the public wanna come down for, come on down? Anybody else? No? Okay. I will close that public comment at this time. All right. Consent agenda, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. Item eight A is appointment of treasure treatment as a volunteer to the Wairika Fire Department. The recommended city council action before you is the motion to adopt the consent agenda of the city of council, of the city of Wairika as presented. Chief, wanna speak about? Chief? Are you sleeping on me?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, I was just, yeah, it's consent agenda. I don't usually speak on consent.
Oh, I just.
No, this is, this is an appropriate time because it is a the night for the fire department. So, uh, no, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm excited that we have Trevor Trutman coming on board. His, his father Jason is a member of the community and his family's been around for a while. Kind of a surprise that, you know, he showed up the door and was wanting to volunteer and just thrilled to have him. So he's got experience with CAL FIRE, very ambitious young man. So talked to him today and he's, he's thrilled to be coming on board. So he will really help us in our, you know, and I want everybody to know that just because we're talking about the need for more volunteers and that we're at times struggling with numbers, that doesn't mean that we're not going out and actively recruiting. And as you saw, the, the banners downtown and the banners on the side of our fire station, there's a good reason behind that. We are getting some results. It's taking a while, but we are making some progress on that. I'll be going to the high school in February, talking to some students there about possibly joining the fire service. So there's things in the works that we're gonna, always gonna need volunteers. So that's definitely in our, in our best interest to do that as well. So anyway, thank you for that. And we definitely highly recommend Trevor to be appointed.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Is he here tonight or no?
No.
Okay, 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 great. What are the wishes of the council? Councilman Cake.
I'll make the motion as presented.
I have a motion by Councilman Cake.
Councilman McCoy, I'll second the motion.
And a second from Pro Tem Councilman McCoy. I'll do roll call. Councilman Cake.
Hi.
Councilman Davis.
Hi.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy.
Hi.
And Mayor Middleton, I, so the motion passes. So congratulations and welcome to Trevor Trutman as our newest volunteer at the Wairika Fire Department. Okay, great. Item number nine, this is special presentations and our announcement. This time is set. This time slot is for informational presentations, appointments, and awards be presented by the city council or to the city council. Wairika Volunteer Fire Department Fire Chief Jerry Lemus with the presentation for need for funding, paid staff, and new fire hall. Mr. Ledbetter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're gonna leave this off with our fire chief discussing the current state of the fire department and kind of the possible needs for a multitude of things. And then we're gonna hear from some of the firefighters. And once that is done, I will follow that with opportunities and options for different funding opportunities that the city council can explore.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So we'll, I do appreciate the opportunity to continue this dialogue that we've had, or at least listen to me talk to you. But it's been important to to get these points across to you because I may have said it in the past that firefighters don't tell their story very well. And this is an opportunity for for me to do that and kind of explain our situation. And you will hear some personal stories and personal views of firefighters because there's been a lot of misinformation, I think, in the public. And of course, today we have social media, which tends to, things kind of go sideways sometimes with what, you know, go sideways from the truth. So these gentlemen will hopefully give you some insight into what their experiences have been and how they see Wairika Fire and their role in protecting the city. So as we said before, the availability of firefighters has been our issue with the increasing response requirements. And as you see, this first picture here is our beautiful apparatus that we have, both old and new. And we still have most of the, excuse me, most of those. Except for the, well, we do, we still have possession of all those. Some in the museum and, and anyway, those are there for, for people to come by and take a look. So the public is here tonight. When we have the pancake breakfast on Gold Rush days, I mean, feel free to come by. If you guys ever wanna come by and take a look at them. If we're not too busy, we'd definitely like to show you around. So next slide, please. So we wanted to go back and, and we'll review this a fourth time, but it's important to note for those that haven't seen it. As one of the public commenters stated that, yeah, you see the, you see the graph and the numbers don't lie. The red, the orange tip parts of the graph are traditional calls for fire and traffic accidents and those types of things, what we call fire calls. And the blue are medicals. And so you can see over time, beginning in nineteen ninety through twenty twenty-two, those have gone crazy. You know, there's, you know, I think in twenty twenty-two, we ended up with two thousand twenty-five calls. So I've seen it in my, it'll be thirty years in June that, yeah, I mean, there were something seventy medicals in ninety-four when I joined. So now there are, you know, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred, you know, you can do the math. Seventy to eighty percent of two thousand twenty-five. So anyway, that gives you an idea of where we're at. So next slide, please. And this slide just demonstrates, you know, the linear demonstration of volunteerism over time, how the numbers have dropped. And that's part of our, part of our issue. And we had a bunch when I got in and we only, we each had mainly just fires. And medicals were there, but you know, over time, those two have converged and that's why we're here tonight. Next slide. Again, this graph just demonstrates workload expressed as a number of alarms per volunteer. So you can see again, the numbers of volunteers have dropped and the workload has increased. So y'all know, having kids, when the kids stop doing things around the house and it's just you or you and your husband, or you and your wife, your spouse, whatever, that, yeah, things get a little tough. So, yeah, that's kind of what's happened here is we end up with, you know, a lot of work and fewer people to handle that, that workload. So pretty self-explanatory. Next slide. And as I said earlier, it's important to keep in mind, we can't quote unquote volunteer ourselves out of the future. We have been fortunate to have very dedicated volunteers for many, many years, continue to have those. However, if you take a scenario as in nineteen ninety, when we had forty-one volunteers, even then, if you hypothetically say we had two thousand twenty-five calls, that would be about three alarms annually. Well, we can handle that, right? We could have handled that. We had mainly just, didn't have a whole lot of medicals and very few. But if you go to two thousand twenty-two, when we had twenty-seven, I believe, that would be forty-nine alarms. So you see it, it jumps tenfold and then some. So you keep that in mind. And another hypothetical scenario with two thousand twenty-five alarms, what would it look like if we had sixty volunteers, which we've never had? Nineteen ninety, two alarms annually per volunteer. And then in two thousand twenty-two, with the numbers we've had, it would, it would have been thirty-four. So it's painting the picture that you see the workload becomes with fewer people. It's ob, excuse me. It's obvious that that workload just becomes pretty onerous. Two thousand twenty-two with twenty-seven first responders and two thousand twenty-five alarms. There were seventy-five alarms annually per volunteer or an alarm about every four days per volunteer, assuming in all these cases that everybody responded, which obviously we know is not gonna happen, right? We're lucky. A lot of times if you get on a fire, you get seven or eight out of, you know, twenty-two. Just because everybody's in a different place. They're on vacation, they're working, they are out of town, you know, doing other things. So anyway, next slide, please. There you go. Thank you. So we have obviously some standards that we try to meet. And this is kind of trying to explain that. The truth is for YFD to be safe and efficient on every call, we need a minimum of two responders per call. And obviously, we wanna go beyond that, but we'll just say for safety's sake, minimum of two. And so with forty-one volunteers as we had in nineteen ninety, ninety-eight alarms annually per volunteer based on the two thousand twenty-five alarms, you know, that's basically what we would have, you know, what each, you know, two volunteers, what they would have experienced with sixty. Then you have sixty-eight alarms annually per volunteer. But you go to twenty-seven volunteers in twenty-two, it jumps all the way up to a hundred and fifty. So you can see that dwindling volunteers is a key factor in burnout, safety becomes an issue because you're not gonna have twenty-seven, all twenty-seven there at one time. So what happens is you have a fraction of that on certain calls and thank God we have automatic aid and mutual aid to call on to, to help us on some of these larger incidents, fires, et cetera. So the reality is, or the reality in twenty twenty-three with twenty-two first responders to share the response load equitably would mean each volunteer would need to respond to a hundred and eighty-four alarms. Next slide. I know what this is gonna say. Yeah. So this is one I really wanna, I wanna hone in on and pay particular attention to. So you see at the top highlighted in yellow states, but the reality is much different. And I have two firefighters here tonight that are in those larger orange bar graphs there at the front with three point two alarms per day, two point seven, two point seven, one point nine, they're in, they're in there. I'm not gonna call them out, but they're here. And they're gonna speak to you later. So having said that, the reality is unfortunately, so it's their availability. They were, they responded because they could. They were dedicated. And you know, that's, that's the main part of it there. They cared and not to say that the others didn't. They just. Here we go. You get to hear that.
Chief Lemus, can you just explain what just happened?
Sure. So what you heard was a pre alert coming from the Warricka Interagency Command Center or Cal Fire Dispatch. And so a pre alert tells you basically what you have. So we have a medical at Walmart. Staging required means could be dangerous. Don't go into the scene, park outside away from the incident, away from Walmart and wait for law enforcement more likely to clear the scene and tell you it's safe. So one of the things we deal with, we don't know what it is, whether there's drugs involved, weapons, we don't know. So they're telling us the information they have is that it's not safe. Wait until it's safe to go in. And then they'll do that gentleman that left, they will do that and then continue on and take care of the call. And that happens ten percent of the time, that particular type of call. So it was good that I was thinking, I go, we're gonna have a call. So you get to hear that. And then we'll get into the dispatch part later. So anyhow, it goes to show you that a bulk of the, so there's one three point two alarms per day, that individual responded in twenty twenty two to eleven hundred and eighteen calls. That is amazing. And that's why he was one of the firefighters of the year. And the other, other individuals are top notch too. Not to say that the others aren't, it's just, and then the majority of those are medical. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna lie. So as you go along, you know, the others, you know, did their, you know, job too, when they responded, it's just kind of the understanding that certain folks are the ones that take a liking to those. And but over time, one did have a job change. Some of the other individuals there may leave or retire. So that's a concern for me as chief where if that does happen, we're gonna be in a quandary is to, all right, who's gonna step up? Well, chief, I can't, I've got a job that I just changed and I can't leave. So another thing that came up here recently in a discussion with one of my former chiefs was employers don't, they're not gonna let people go to medicals time and time and time again, maybe a fire because they understand that that's, you know, how devastating that can be, especially as a business owner. They're gonna say, hey, yeah, go, go take care of it, but not seven or eight times a day for for a medical. In fact, this is a good time to let you know that on January twenty third, this is not, not a stretch of the truth that midnight to midnight on the twenty third, so from twenty third to midnight to midnight on the next, just before it turned to the twenty fourth, we had sixteen calls in that period of time. So thirteen were medicals, two public assists, and one was a smell of gas, which turned out to be, turned out to be a false alarm. So. Anyhow, so you get the idea of the concern here with what could happen. And that's, this is really important to understand. So yeah, there's more folks that could step up and do the job, but a lot of them are just out of the area working and, you know, they're, they're just not available. So next slide, please. So what has changed since nineteen ninety? Two laws went into effect, AB eleven twenty seven. It eliminated a lot of the immunities from civil and criminal liabilities afforded to government employees in cases involving workplace safety standards. So now we're myself, city staff, whatever could be held to, you know, be held accountable if someone gets hurt, many firefighters. And SB twelve oh seven became law. And it's, you know, potential is there, but we do everything we can to assure that everybody's safe. But it also creates an environment where you have to really careful and make sure they get the training they need. So next slide. Next slide, Cindy. Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. So and other things that have changed, as you're all are aware, vehicles are far more complicated as far as our level of training goes. Multiple airbags, electric vehicles, hybrids manufactured with more plastics. Structures are built with composites, changes the way we fight fire, the way we train. Homes are filled with plastics and chemicals that require special training. That changed, a lot of that changed back prior to even prior to my entering the fire service. So it was for in the forefront and now we're pretty much used to it. But you, you get a mix of older construction with new, so you always have to take that into account. And like I said last time, the Warricka population through the census data, nineteen sixty, you know, it was a different world. We had roughly hundred and twenty eight residents per first responder that were on the, you know, as far as the number of first responders that we had, hundred and sixty nine in nineteen ninety, and then two hundred and eighty nine residents per first responder in twenty twenty, based on population. Changed a little bit. And as we go forward, who knows what it'll be, but we have to be prepared. Next slide. Training is a huge issue as some of the other people will attest to. Chief Bernie Paul and Chief Anzo that are, that are here will attest to that. And many, many hours are spent on training and we're never, we have some of the best, some of the top instructors in the, in the area here tonight. And they're the first ones to tell you, you never stop learning. So it's critical. So, you know, many, many hours need to be spent, over five hundred and fifty hours are needed. And that's just the tip of the iceberg. We, and that's kind of what we do. We kind of just scratch the tip of the iceberg, but we do everything we can to make sure that all those, all those areas that you see are addressed as often as, you know, as needed. So next slide. So there we got an update that they're canceled. So, okay. And on the area of training, here you see on the left, firefighters getting ready to make entry. Actually, that's like a fire behavior. It looks like they're watching the fire and they're being instructed on what's happening. Top and kind of on the right and the middle, they're taking a class there, it looks like, getting some classroom instruction. And here on the, the bigger picture, bottom, bottom right here, they're doing extrication with jaws. Something is very critical on all vehicles, but now especially with electric vehicles, we have to be careful. We don't, and airbags that we don't do things incorrectly and have things blow up in our face or injure the, the patients in the vehicle. So takes a lot of extra training, different than what, how we used to do it. But everybody, everybody there, I remember that training too. That was super, super good training. So next slide. Okay, so we were talking about dispatch and what actually happens. So if you can pull that down just a hair. If not, that's okay. So the yellow box up top, so the call comes into nine one one. And just like it did, you heard the pre alert. That was Cal Fire already received, the dispatch had already received the call. From then it goes, they dispatch it out and they went to medical. So you see the medical, the two boxes there, right, we're right with the toolboxes, toolbar is there now. Okay. Yeah, it's all right. So in this case, they gave us, you know, staging required, and that's not a big deal. But in this case, they had, we responded. And the ambulance responded and somewhere in there, the line would break and we were canceled. If they were to continue on, go to scene, and the ambulance would go to scene, take care of the call, to get the patient transported or not, and then they would return to station. So you kind of just follow the, the flow chart there, if you will, and you can kind of see what takes place. And there's different things that happen. Sometimes it's ambulance only if they get dispatched to say the person requests ambulance only, which it happens occasionally. Not all the time, but a lot of times we'll hear that on our frequency because it doesn't tie up the other channels. And then we hear it because we might get called eventually and we kind of know that there, we might get called later to help them lift the person or it might turn into something and they need help. And what's the other scenario here? Why if you notify, we assist. Okay. That pretty much takes care of it. So and then there's little, little nuances to each of those. So then on the upper section there, it could go if it's a fire, non-medical. We may have automatic aid plus South Warricka, Montague, Cal Fire. And that if it's a structured fire, commercial or residential, they will respond and we have agreements with them. And we do the same into their jurisdiction. And or if it's just in town, sometimes we get the scene first and we will be able to handle it ourselves. And then cancel the other agencies and then we'll take care of it, return to station. And then we have the mutual aid, which sometimes those are anymore, it's pretty much, it's pretty much automatic aid because, you know, they already know. And it gets a faster response. So in any event, once it's, the situation is mitigated, we'll take care of it and return to station. So if you have a scanner, you know, you hear all the, the radio traffic and you probably already know all that. But anyway, next slide, please. So where is YFD responding to? We get a lot of questions on that. What, you know, what happened? Where was the call? Where'd you go? And you kind of want to go to the next slide there, Cindy, and we'll, I think we're gonna have this in about three parts. Yeah. So this looks like Central. So this is kind of what they call a heat map with the reddish color being fires, the blue being medical, which is you can kind of see how it has a takes almost like water, you know, takes over a lot of that portion of the, of the city there. And then you have the other types of calls. Law enforcement, then you have hazard there, one point four percent public assists, which is those are getting to be, seem like they're more and more. So but you kind of get an idea. They're pretty equally distributed once you see the and that is, I guess that is the whole city there. Take that back. Well, that is the whole the whole city there in one shot. So, but it gives you an idea of how it's distributed. Okay, next slide. And this is kind of a close up. And kind of a, you get the idea a little bit better there of where everything is at, where all the calls have, have been located. Next slide. I don't know if that got moved or what, but so that's okay. I think people get the idea that, you know, it isn't just one specific area that gets all the calls. It might, it might appear that way. I mean, we know, we know where the hotspots are and but quite honestly, it like there, we had one at Walmart tonight. Two or three in the morning, we might get one on the north end of town. You just, you just never know. But you can't assume. So next slide. And there it gives you a little better view of the central and south end of town. So then we have off to the right there, there's the Campbell tracks and the group tribal housing. Next slide. And then on down into some of Bernie's district there too. So Lay Station. So our fire, we're gonna change gears here a little bit to give you a little brief synopsis on the Lay Station. So named after Major Lay, they, he was a first chief, one of the first chiefs. So the station on the left there, the, of the screen there, you can kind of see the split where it kind of split there where the rain gutter comes down. That was all built in the thirties, late twenties, early thirties. And it's over ninety years old and the one on the right was added on at some point. Right of that is the museum. So it appears to be a rather large building, but all the apparatus is contained in the, what you see there with the tile roof. And, you know, it's, it's served us well. But it's, it's seen better days. I wish Chief Alan Jones could have made it tonight. He could express his experience with that. I think Trace Churchill, he was around when some of the repairs had to be done on the, the bearing wall inside there. We had a sinkhole. And that had to be repaired. There was a lot of engineering that went on with that. Things were tore up for a while. We've had broken water, water pipes that caused a big hole in the, in the apparatus bay. That was rather interesting for a while. And I don't know if we had photos on that or not, but we have antiquated exhaust things to get the exhaust out of the building, you know, compared to what they have now on, on, you know, a newly constructed building, which is considerable health hazard for firefighters. The walls are, you know, pretty much blocking from back in the day when we had nothing. We have some things now that are actually on the apparatus that do help, but smaller, we've outgrown, you can see the apparatus. There's an example there, how much wider the new apparatus are than the old ones. So but you're talking, you know, a hundred years of difference there too. So yeah, it's, it's one of those things that for, for an essential services building that they're designed to last fifty years. It's lasted much longer than that, but you know, it's time to start making some plans to do something with it. And again, it's unfortunate that that hadn't started sooner. And like I say, we've, we've kept it up and done a good job with it, but it's something we have to, we have to address. We're not doing our, our due diligence if we don't. So next slide. Just I don't miss anything. And we had sinkholes, a single pane windows. Yeah, not very efficient. I know our power bill just went up quite a bit. No sprinkler system. Equipment storage, we've had to modify the doors to get the apparatus in. In fact, with the ladder truck, if we have chains on it because of snow, we have to keep the snow and the ice from accumulating because if it builds up too much, we won't be able to get it out of the building because it'll, it'll jam, it'll, if it's too much, tires will lift up on the ice and we have problems. So yeah. Typical lifespan, like I said, fifty years for an essential services building. We're way over that. And it's not ADA compliant. Not that you're gonna have people that, you know, are handicapped, they're gonna be firefighters, but we have the public that we have to be considerate of. So next slide. And probably have seen these around town. We had one blow off the, its post today downtown because it was, it was so, excuse me, so windy. So but, you know, we're, these are paying some dividends. I think we'll get some more. We'll get some more folks to, you know, sign up here shortly. And so for those in the audience, if you know folks that are responsible and, and want to work hard, then, you know, would be, would be a good addition. We'd love to have them. And I don't, you really can't see it there. It's the Warricka's firefighting there. They go, the football team, yeah, they're all number two. But Clamath Engine number two out of Warricka. So that's a really cool picture. And thank you, Jay Perkins, for putting all this together, man. He did a great job. Thank you. So yeah, it's, times have changed. And I will say that you know, the story, history of Warricka Fire is pretty amazing. And going forward, it's time that we keep up with where we need to be. The city has saved a lot of money over the years with volunteers and will continue to have volunteers. I know it, we need them. I'm proud of, you know, being their leader. But I think it's only fair to probably, you know, look at, you know, making some changes to, you know, help them, help us, help us, you know, help the city even, even better than what we're doing now. It's changed. I think you'll hear some testimony from some of the folks tonight that they're of the same mindset. So anyway, thank you for the time. And I'll call some individuals up here if that's amenable and we'll go forward.
Thank you, Chief Lemus. So.
I'll have Assistant Chief BJ Lostlet.
All right, great.
Good evening, BJ Lostlet, Assistant Fire Chief. I asked him to go back to the slide. This is the bar graph slide. No. Down right there, yeah. So one thing I want to talk about tonight is not necessarily So one thing I want to talk about tonight is not necessarily the, the call volume.
BJ, just step up a little bit.
It's not only the call volume. Because of the call volume is increasing. I've been a member of this department for twenty-five years. I started in nineteen ninety-eight. When we were, you know, in between five hundred and a thousand calls. And then we had, as Chief pointed out, we had two, two firefighters, two years in a row responded more than a thousand calls in a year. That's pretty impressive. One, one of my issues is. Like Chief Lemus said, on the twenty-third, we had thirteen calls between midnight and midnight. How much time does that take out of your day? Thirteen calls? There are sixteen calls, sorry, thirteen medicals, sixteen calls out of your day. My son Caleb, how many do you respond to? Fourteen out of the sixteen calls. So pretty much that one entire day for him is short. I don't have the exact numbers, but an average medical aid probably is in a half hour long. Sometimes longer depending on the severity of the medical, the time it takes ambulance to get there. You know, so forth. The average structure fire call, an hour, three hours, five hours. Thunderbird building fire a day. So, you know, thirteen medical aids, half hour piece, you know, it's six and a half hours of your day gone. Now think about that at night. We all have jobs. So we're making decisions in the middle of the night after being awake all night. Am I gonna go on the next call? And not get any sleep and still gonna work. So those are a lot of the, the issues that I have. It's just the time consumption. So we can talk about call volume, but when you start putting times on that, it obviously makes it a reality. I can't walk away from my job for six and a half hours a day. I wouldn't have a job. So. On top of that is the day-to-day operations of the fire department. We have equipment that has to be maintained. Who's gonna do that? Do I go down and do it on my own time, which I do? The rest of the guys come down to do it on their own time? They do. It's just getting more and more severe. And to give you an example. As of January first, Cal OSHA is now taking the stance that anytime our structure gear is exposed to anything. It has to be cleaned in an extractor. It has to be inspected. And if there's any damage, it has to go off to be fixed, inspected and recertified and come back. So with that, we have to have multiple sets of turnouts. So that's just more time out of our day after responding to calls, you know, to maintain our equipment. And Chief Vella can probably attest to how much a set of gear costs because he just bought a bunch. To, to be in compliance with the new OSHA regulations. So we might be coming back for, asking for some money. But, so those are some of my issues, you know, as a time element and, and that doesn't even include getting into the training side. Because per ISO, they only look at what training we do for structure fires. They don't care about medicals. They don't care about traffic accidents. They don't care about vegetation fires. It's only structure. So when you start adding up all the hours, that's me, that we have to maintain a year, it's a full-time job. Any questions?
Council McCray.
Thanks BJ for your presentation. And, and, and you don't, don't hit me over the head or anything. I hear what you're saying and I understand it. So I'm gonna ask you to distill. The issue in twenty words or less. To the council. Yeah, distill, distill the main issue or the first and second issue.
Call volume and burnout.
Reduction of call volume, transition of call volume. I'm not trying to put you on a hot seat. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to, you know, kind of figure out where we want to go. And then the same thing with burnout. Again, what, what we're looking, we're trying to find answers and we're not the professionals. We don't know this. So we need, we may need to be let along. You know, a little bit. That's why I'm asking for it to be distilled for us because we are rookies.
So obviously our medical call volume has increased. That's, that increases. I have my own personal opinions of why some of it has increased and I won't get into that here, but. A lot of it, a lot of it is everybody just calls nine-one-one for everything now. I mean, I can give you an example. We were on a call at. The apartments across the street from the hospital at two AM. Because lady felt like she needed to go to the hospital for the last three days. But she wasn't willing to walk across the street. So we get the fire department up, we get the ambulance crew up. The driver literally out of the parking lot across the street into the hospital parking lot. That's the type of call volume we're seeing. So I call volume obviously is increased, burnout. If you look at the graphs. Five, six, maybe seven firefighters are running the majority of the fire, or the call volume. So. It. Makes it really difficult. When you don't know who's gonna respond.
I'm just trying to pick your brain. Thank you.
And, and on that, I mean, I actually had a firefighter approach me last week and asked me a question of, when do you know it's time to call it quit? And my response was, that's an individual choice. I can't answer that for you. I've been doing this for, in the fire service for twenty-eight years total. I still enjoy it. And yeah, there's been times I've wanted to just walk away, but I'm still here. So.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Wasn't a gotcha. I didn't want to try and put you up.
No, and, and it, it, I can't give the answer for why our call volumes are increasing. I have a good idea, but.
I could talk to you about that privately.
And. And the last thing I want to mention, I mean, we do have a great group of guys and they're dedicated, guys and. Yeah, guys and girls. They are dedicated. You know, but something, something has to give or else, like I said in the ad hoc meeting, we can build a new station. We can buy a new apparatus. If there's no one to staff it, then what's the point? Thank you.
Thank you BJ. Thank you Council McCray. All right. Who are you calling next Jerry? Chief Lemus.
Josh Danshaw, firefighter.
So, good evening. My name is Josh Danshaw. I'm a firefighter with fire department. I joined October twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. So my tenure is not as long. As pretty much all of the others here, with the exception of. Since joining in October of twenty-one, I've responded to over two thousand two hundred calls. Serving as a volunteer has been a demanding experience, requiring sacrifices of time with family and sleepless nights. There's a period of time where I responded to a call every day for over sixty days consecutively. I ask you, how many of you were willing to work every day? No weekends? Two thousand two hundred responses in just over two years. Represents an average of one response every nine hours. Now, obviously, that's not how the calls come. There are times where it's not as heavy, but just for illustrative purposes. If you were to average it out, once every nine hours. For the last two years, every nine hours, I responded to my pager blaring tones, calling for someone that needed help. Getting up out of bed at two AM to help someone's grandparent that fell in the middle of the night. Jumping up from the dinner table to help somebody's young child having a medical emergency. Leaving work for a vehicle collision with severe injuries. Dashing away from family events to respond to somebody's home or business in flames. Interrupting bedtime stories with my kids to respond to a vegetation fire that had the potential to spread. Every nine hours, dropping everything to respond. When we return to the station after a call, we record that call on a log sheet. What doesn't get recorded on that log sheet is the fatigue of answering four calls in a night. Or the mixed look of fear and sadness from loved ones when you leave to respond for a call. What doesn't go on that log sheet is when your kids are upset that you had to leave. In the middle of playing a game with them. It doesn't count the number of dinners missed. It does not record the mental and emotional stress that we endure. Given the nature of volunteering, there's extraordinarily little buffer between the home life and the work of a volunteer. After completing those logs, we return to our, quote unquote, normal lives. We must return to work near minutes after performing CPR. We come home to our families after responding to an awful traffic collision that involved children. We go to work after a sleepless night of fighting the flames of somebody's house burning. We become experts in compartmentalization, setting aside what we experience to continue in our daily lives. Unlike a notification for a work email on your phone. The buzz and tones of a pager instantly pierce any conversation. And it cannot be put off until later. There are no such thing as work hours, weekends or holidays for emergencies. In two thousand twenty-two, I pursued and obtained my EMT license, gaining more skills and, and abilities to provide care. Containing my EMT was not something that is required. But the volume and the depth of medically related calls drove, gave me the desire to condition, for additional training. This involved being in class from six PM to ten PM, two nights a week for sixteen weeks. Plus twenty-four hours of clinical hours, riding on an ambulance. In total, it's over a hundred and fifty hours of instruction time. That doesn't count the hours studying for exams or studying for the national certification. All of this was in addition, in addition to working full-time. And running calls. And in twenty twenty-two, I ran over eleven hundred calls. As well as attending regular trainings with the fire department. Why invest in the additional time and my own money? For a certification and training that's not required. There are times where we are forced to divide our response when multiple calls come in. And there are times there are only one of us responding. The additional training has given me confidence when in the middle of the night, I'm the only one on scene until the ambulance arrives. The path of the volunteer firefighter has definitely presented challenges. Time has become a precious commodity consumed by balancing training and the constant readiness to respond at a moment's notice. With maintaining activities of that normal life. Holidays become cherished stolen memories amidst duty calls and family gatherings sometimes had to wait. We all remember the McKinney fire. The McKinney fire served as a stark reminder of how precious a commodity the time really is. As the flames threatened our community, I stood watch with other members of YFD, some of which are here today. We sacrifice time at our own homes with our families to be at the station. It was surreal to listen to the radio traffic if the unit's task was slowing the progress of the fire. While we were standing by at lay station or patrolling the outskirts of town, identifying areas we could defend if the fire came in. All of us knew that standing ready at the station meant we were taking the time away from our own houses and families, leaving our family members behind. With the responsibility to gather up important documents, sentimental items in preparation for the worst. These challenges will undoubtedly continue. The sleepless nights persist and the sacrifices remain a necessary part of the equation. But the burden of volunteering doesn't fall on the shoulders of the individual. There is a burden and demand on friends and loved ones as well. They are the ones that pick up the slack at home when we respond to calls. They are the ones that endure us being tired and grumpy due to a lack of sleep. They worry for our safety when we're out on calls that are potentially dangerous. When someone steps up to volunteer, their family and friends do as well. For the last two years, my family has shouldered this burden of answering a call to endure, to worry. Every nine hours. The demand only continues to grow, not just in responding to calls for service. Responding to emergencies demands the time and effort to maintain perishable skills and to train and learn new tactics. The demand for training is equally about protecting the community as it is ourselves and fellow firefighters. Just as our mental tools must be sharpened with training and practice, so must we take the time to maintain our physical tools. The care and maintenance of our equipment and supplies is compounded by the increase of calls for service. With this growing demand of response, training, maintenance, there's a proportional. Growth of demand for volunteers to find respite from the work. The harder we push in training and responding, we need equal time to rest and recover. Everyone has had the thought, if only there were more hours in the day, I could get that done. Well, we all know it's not possible to have more hours in a day. And in the world of emergency services, the work is never done. For a volunteer firefighter, it becomes a balancing act of time dedicated to duty and to family. We as volunteers cannot create more hours in the day to meet the demand. I struggled with how to phrase my story when Chief Lemus asked me to present today. I could have presented stories about my very first call, which was a tragic fire involving the death of a toddler. But that's a very narrow focus. Oftentimes, we're, we're so focused on. The impact. On, on very narrow things that we don't take the time to zoom out and realize that the responses, the burdens of being a volunteer. Also fall back on our families. Mr. Pacheco touched on it with, you know, the pagers being intrusive and family members hating it. I can tell you that's the truth. My kids know the routine. Pager goes off, they come to the door and wave goodbye. Volunteering isn't just about getting in a truck, throwing on some lights and racing off to an emergency. There's a lot more to it. And there's a lot more to these calls than. Data can present. And so that's where the impact of these stories can tell that part of the tale. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Pope. Hi, my name's Tim Pope. I've been a volunteer firefighter with the department since nineteen eighty-six. I've drove most of the trucks that were up there and some that are not there. I got back in in twenty seventeen after a little hiatus because they were shorthanded. First year was seven hundred and eighty-five calls. A lot of those were by myself, like Mr. Sands, I'll reiterate, but I did it because A, I like it. B, it is fun, meet a lot of new people. And I think the best thing I can say is that when we come through the door. And we beat the ambulance there ninety-eight percent of the time and say, hey, how you doing? And they know us by name. Sometimes they yell at you, sometimes they don't. In my career, between military, police, fire, I've done CPR eighty-eight times. One save, but that was one save. So you know, not a good average, but it gave somebody a second chance. There's a gentleman right there into his house. You know what? Two, three o'clock in the morning. And that's the killer. They talked about the pager going off. It takes a lot of your family time. But after a while, guess what? If we don't get a call at between one forty-five and three o'clock in the morning, I'm awake. It's automatic. I haven't turned it off. My wife doesn't even know I've gone after. But I do this because we have a good community. They expect us to be there. We do a lot of repetitive calls to the same place, sometimes for the same reason, sometimes for a legitimate reason. It doesn't matter. When you sign the form and raise your hand, you said you'd be there as much as you can, and that's the thing. It's time management. These guys that work full-time jobs. It's tough. I mean, we beat each other up. Can't go any farther than that without, you know, saying we do need some new stuff. Time will tell. But as long as the pager goes off. I'm gonna be there until I become a liability to myself and others. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Tim.
Back here. We'll hear from Trace Churchill.
Uh, my name's Trace Churchill. Um, I'm a retired firefighter. I did it for twenty-seven years. Loved it. Absolutely loved it. Would still do it today. But I'm an old fart and I can't crawl around anymore. I wasn't in, I wasn't an officer. I was black helmet and I was very proud of being a black helmet. Uh, still to this day. And there's a lot of black ones back here and that's, that's good. Couple of things. I mean, I have so much skin in this game. It's not even, I'm retired fire. I'm in insurance. I own my own business. Um, I, I see all aspects of this. And it's come to a point, it, it doesn't matter if it should have been done twenty years ago or today. There's a few things you need to happen. We need paid personnel. These guys can't do it. They don't have enough people. They don't have enough time and the training's excessive. We'll just get straight to the point. Uh, they need help desperately. They need a new facility. It's totally inadequate. Uh, the equipment they're getting, as Jerry alluded to, is getting wider. It's also getting taller. And they can't put it in there. Uh, the reason for Major H, and I was on the Major H committee for many, many years then, we we managed that money. We were the go-between between the cities, but
Hey Trace, just make sure you talk this way to us. That's okay. And the people that are listening to you as well online.
So, uh, the Major H uh, money was originally intended to buy new equipment. At the time we did it, we had equipment that was over fifty-seven years old. That old number five, you can't see it in there. That's one of our old trucks. That wasn't even our oldest engine at the time. So that money was primarily used for the purpose of uh, buying new equipment to keep these guys. Who are the most important asset you have safe. That was the intent of that. So, uh, very short and quick, you do need personnel, you need a new fire station, in my opinion. How you pay for it? I'm not here to debate that. I don't, I don't want to get into that. I'm also, um, I just brought some statistics just because I'm a, I'm on the board at the hospital as well. Uh, yes, I do continue to volunteer in the community and very involved. Uh, but just to, to reiterate what Jerry's showing in those graphs. Um, our ER visits this year, and I just got the totals, we're up five percent with ER. That's five hundred and seventy people coming in through our doors at the hospital. Um, our outpatient um, visits are up twenty-three percent. People are needing more service. What I'm trying to show here is the demand for emergency services and the services of the hospital. And the rural health clinic is up twelve percent, which is seven thousand four hundred and seventeen more patient contacts uh, over the prior year. Uh, the reason I bring these up is these don't stay static. They continue to rise. We're going to continue to see a rise in what these guys do have to go on these calls. This just backs it up even more. And with the rural health clinic, uh, that also includes urgent care and primary care, which we've increased. Uh, the number of people that can be seen uh, that way to alleviate the ER. But if you look at the ER, it's still increasing regardless of that. So this is only going to compound. It's not going to go down. It's not going to get simpler for these guys. Uh, they need some relief. They need it now as soon as you can, if possible. And that would be personnel and facilities. Alright, yeah, that is for my.
Thanks, Trace.
Okay, uh, we'll have Phil Anzo, former Cal Fire Unit Chief and.
Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the council, my name is Phil Anzo. I'm been a resident of Warricka City since nineteen ninety-five. Uh, I want to give you a little bit of my background before I start talking about the fire department. Uh, just so you understand my perspective. Um, I started my career in the fire service in nineteen ninety-three. Yeah, down at, as a volunteer firefighter at Weed Volunteer Fire Department. And I also started uh, as a seasonal firefighter at the same time with CDF at the time. I was pretty fortunate uh, to be able to promote through the ranks of Cal Fire. Uh, working in the field as an engineer, a fire captain. I worked in the emergency command center. I worked administrative positions. And finally promoted to the unit chief position, which I held for eight years. During that time as the unit chief, I spent uh, quite a bit of time with the Fire Chiefs Association. Working with the local government fire chiefs, discussing the challenges that they're faced every day. They, they revolve around three things, staffing, training, and funding. Those three things are very difficult for our volunteers all the way around. Volunteerism is on a decline nationwide. And you can see why volunteer fire departments are having, struggling with volunteers. It is a second full-time job for these individuals. It's difficult. I retired and I know the struggles that the Warricka Volunteer Fire Department is facing, but I chose not to volunteer. Because I didn't want another full-time job. So I offered my services to Chief Lemus, now behind the scenes, um, to help him with reports and just administrative work, something that I know very well. The call volume issue um, is directly related to the staffing um, solution. The reason why those calls continue to climb is because of what everybody has in their pocket. Everybody has one of these and has the ability to call nine-one-one very easily for what they deem as an emergency. It's, it's um, it's really their perspective on what an emergency is. Now, that individual that didn't want to walk across the street to the hospital, maybe they felt they couldn't. Maybe they, they physically couldn't do that themselves and they needed that assistance, but other times they might be able to and they just choose not to. But that is the reason why call volume has increased. It's difficult for the dispatch center to understand and um, get that information out of a caller. Sometimes they don't give us any information. Other times they give us way, way too much. But either way, that dispatcher sends the fire department to go deal with that emergency. So no matter what, who calls nine-one-one and what that call is about, that is going to result in a dispatch and a pager activation for these volunteers. You heard the um, impacts that the pager has to not just you physically um, getting your heart racing for that call, but also the impacts that it has on your loved ones. Um, it is, it can be detrimental over time. Um, I have a lot of respect for the folks here in this audience that are volunteers because when I was a dispatcher in early two thousand. I thought to myself, wow, Warricka City is very, very busy. They are second in call volume to Cal Fire. That says quite a bit, and they're doing it with a volunteer workforce. Which is mind-boggling to me. And then working with Chief Lemus and Jay Perkins collecting these statistics so that we could demonstrate this to you, the need for staffing. I was blown away of the number of calls that those six or seven volunteers are responding to annually. That is more than a full-time job. The solution to that problem is staffing. When you have paid staffing, you now have seven, nine, twelve individuals that are dedicated for those responses. They have a shift pattern that allows them to be dedicated to that department, to be available for response, to ready their equipment and to train. Then they have relief by going off duty and they get that respite that was sort of, that was talked about very, very well, very eloquently. So staffing, training, I touched upon briefly. Uh, there is so much training required in, for the fire service now. That it is difficult even for a full-time fire department to uh, ensure that all of their personnel meet all of the requirements. I had a full-time training officer and we still had individuals fall off their uh, currency in certain areas that would need remediation. Very, very difficult. And if it's not documented, it didn't happen. That compounds that issue. That puts a great workload on, on Chief Lemus. Um, as he's the only one as the fire chief and the administrator to ensure that training is occurring. And the last thing that I talked about um, was the funding issue. Um, everything that is associated with the fire department costs four times as much. It, it is not cheap to run a fire department. Uh, staffing is a large portion of the cost of any fire department. Uh, but the uh, the equipment is a significant cost also. And you, you heard that there are additional requirements being placed on fire departments. This new OSHA regulation requiring additional turnout gear is gonna be very expensive to all of the agencies in this county. So I just want to say thank you for taking this time that um, that the last couple of months that we've been presenting information to you. Chief Lemus has done a great job telling you what the, the concerns are with the department. And it truly is reaching a point that we don't want the system to break down, which means that there's a non-response. We're it's pretty critical at this point that we find a solution. And I know that working together, we are gonna find a solution for this because it's so important. Uh, we need to ensure that there is a fast, safe, and efficient response to the emergency calls that our citizens or Warricka have. And also those visitors that come into our city have when they need that emergency call to be made and answered. So thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll have uh, Chief Bernie Paul from South Warricka Fire.
So my name's Bernie Paul. I'm the South Warricka Fire Chief. Um, this year, twenty twenty-four is fifty years of me being an active firefighter. And I started out back in nineteen seventy-four um, as a seasonal firefighter and moved up to the ranks. I'm retired from Cal Fire. We cut, retired as a chief. Uh, Phil took my, his, my spot after he left. And I've worked throughout the state, many different places throughout the state. Um, so I've gained a lot of experience. I took the chief for South Warricka in uh, twenty sixteen. Um, they were on the verge of folding up then, and when I was still working with Cal Fire from the early nineties until two thousand and seven, I was the chairman of the board for South Warricka. And then when I made chief, I had to step down as a conflict eventsors. So then I retired. They asked if I'd come back and I told them I'd give them two years. Man, that was what, eight years ago? So here I am. But anyway, um, like I said, I'm, I'm the uh, chief of South Warricka. I'm also the president of the Fire Chiefs Association. I'm here in uh, Siskiyou County. Um, I've been here for over thirty years. Um, being able to watch the fire service. Um, I've had to watch for thirty years Warricka City Fire Department lose their best firefighters. They had some of the best and brightest firefighters when I first got here. And you saw that graft where the two or three firefighters are carrying a whole load? That's happened throughout the years. And what happens, those ones that carry the whole load end up getting burned out and then they leave. You guys have lost some great firefighters and it just really kind of broke my heart just to see that kind of breaking down and losing those guys because we spend a lot of money, thousands of dollars training these guys. And then we, we do it to burn out. Six hundred calls a year is what they consider you start getting to burnout. And you're, you guys are way past that. And so that's been kind of going on and on and on with it. And so it's just been uh, kind of tough to watch. I know once I retired and I came back to fire department. One of the glaring things that jumped out at me, I never get a day off as a volunteer. You know, when I was working. Uh, you know, and I've worked at busy stations. I worked down in Mid Valley. We're going thirty-five hundred calls a year out of one station. We're two on and two off. And when I got off, I was like wore out for the first day. And my wife just go, man, you're worthless when you get home. And just to rest up. And now these guys are doing it seven days a week. And, and, and you know, I don't go to near as many calls as they do. And I'm like, I don't know how they do it. They do it two or three times a night getting up. I mean, how many times could you guys get up in the middle of the night, go do something and actually come back and be able to go back to sleep? You can't do it. You know, my rule is if it's three o'clock or after, I didn't go back to bed. Cause I'll just lay there and, and can't go back to sleep. So the wear and tear is terrible and we beat up our best firefighters. Cause those are the guys that you know will get it done. We asked them to do a lot of stuff outside of responding, the maintenance on equipment, the reports. You know, making phone calls, setting up training. We just beat those guys up completely. So anyway, with that, um, Warricka City is not the only department that's struggling with this. This is an ongoing uh, dilemma throughout the whole United States. And uh, like I said, volunteerism is declining and a lot of it's because of the training requirements. We require so much training to get them involved. Then a lot of them quit before they even get the training or we can actually even use them. Because it is, you know, so strenuous and so hard. Now you got OSHA. It, you know, applying these different laws where it's like, well, South Warricka had to buy an extractor. So that's five thousand dollars to be compliant. I had to buy new sets of turnouts. I have turnouts on the shelf that are brand new. But they're more than ten years old. And the law, the way it reads is they gotta be ten years or newer. And you gotta have two sets. And so it's really hard to comply. So there's a lot of uh, things that are going on. Um, so those parts, the training requirements and all that is a real uh, wear and tear on our folks. The call volume. We're not gonna change the people calling. We, the, the needs of the public have changed. And you know, I've heard a couple of comments, well, you know, it just, we need to change that. Not, that's not gonna happen. You know what? They're gonna call nine-one-one. We can't rely on the dispatchers to, to make that decision. Is this a, a needed call or not? You know, I've been to general illness calls and get there and we're doing CPR on. You just don't know what you're getting into. So it's, we need to change. We're not gonna change the needs of the public. Now, can we do outreach and try to train people to be a little bit more selective like call nine-one-one? Yeah, we can. But it's, it's not gonna change much. Society has relied so much on this. Um, I know I, last week I kind of got into it with my board over call volume. And cause I had an individual that in December, I went to his house seventeen times. And in January, I've been there eighteen times. And so they're getting on me. Well, why don't you just not go? And I'm like, I, I can't do that. And they go, well, it's law enforcement. Okay, so law enforcement goes, who's law enforcement gonna call? They're gonna call the fire department. So it's like, why even get them involved? We're gonna go on it. Cause that's where it falls on. And this individual, um, they were not caused that he just had no other option to do it. And he'd fall out of bed. And anyway, um, it's one of those things. And I was filling out the elder abuse forms and trying to get, you know, the health department, all those going on. And finally, last week, I finally got him into a, a facility uh, to actually get him some help. So it's been, I've, I'm at forty-seven calls this month. That's a lot for me. And this, this week, it's been actually pretty quiet. So I'm like, great. On, cause yeah, cause I mean, I've been on every one of those calls too. Uh, let's see, what else do I have there? Um, the pressures on the volunteers, it comes from three things. It's from the fire department putting pressure on, home putting pressure on them, and work putting pressure on them. And it's a really tough balance to try to balance all those. And it's, you know, it gets easier the older you get. You don't have kids and ball games and all those events. But there's a lot of you know, events that I end up missing being on volunteers. I mean, we were all what at at the in town on Christmas Day at the structured fire at the restaurant. And so, you know, all of us, we end up going to those. So it ends up being a real hard balance. And sometimes your partners and stuff at home can't do with it. And that really adds to it. And that adds to the burnout also. So the burnout is a huge, a huge issue there. Uh, let's see. Yeah, I I get a lot of the city calls on there. And I see them going out three and four times in the middle of the night, sometimes more. It's like, how long can you do that? I know when I worked down in Mid Valley, I'd be wore out. We we like take naps the next day in between calls to try to, you know, stay healthy. Uh, let's see. And the graphs that you guys showed up there, you know, I struggle with those a little bit only because it didn't show the hours and BJ brought that up. The hours are huge. They're way more than what that graph showing. So that eleven hundred calls ends up, I bet you if you added the hours up to it, it's gonna astound you how many hours that are added into that. So there are a lot of other extenuating issues that go along with with those calls. I just look at my notes, make sure I I kind of sat down and just was trying to capture all the big things that are out there. One of the things that, you know, I had looked at, I I worked at a department down in Nevada County. And we were going through the same issue that you guys are here. And what we ended up doing is getting some company officer staffing. And that and we then we saved our volunteers for fires and the bigger incidents. And it worked really well. There is a balance to that, though. Once you get state paid staffing, and a lot of volunteers don't want to respond. So you gotta balance that out and make sure you still include them. But it is clearly an answer to that. You know, I I'm like, Trace, these guys need help and they need it now. You need a short term and a long term. You know, the short term you could do, you could almost do some stipends where they work twenty-four hour shifts and give these guys a couple of days off whenever and have some, you know, pay some people to come in. And I know a lot of the light departments, we would come and help whatever it took to get these guys through it. While you guys figure out the long term with staffing, because they need help now. On there. And I mean, it's, you know, I've seen guys at calls, you know, where there's just one guy showing up. And I have the same problem at my department. And a lot of times I'm the only guy on the rescue. And that's, that gets old, especially when you got an accident. I know the other day, we had it head on there and the Cal Fire engine was gone. And I'm by myself. And luckily, Chief Valo was in town. He came, him and I both cut the guy out of the car before the ambulance even got there. Just you know, so the old chiefs, we can, we can still do a little bit. One of the things that I I would, and you guys may have looked at this, but there's a lot of cities that are real, real close in population and call volume of you guys. And and they all have a lot of staffing. And I shouldn't say a lot. They have minimal staffing. And so that's one thing to look at. You know, city of Susanville is real close, Crescent City. I mean, you know, the population is almost exactly the same and the call volume is really close. So they they have seen the light and actually got some staffing to actually support your volunteers because they definitely need that. Oh, let's see, there was something I saw in here. Yeah, you know, I just in closing, you know, don't lose any more of your trained volunteers. You guys got some great volunteers, you know, keep them there. Look at trying to provide some staffing. Like I said, the short term, be able to get some folks in and actually give them some days off and be able to do it. I know I do it. I respond to a lot of the city calls and actually come in here and do it, you know, Montague, South Warricka and Warricka City. We all try to share our calls because we're all kind of fighting the same problems. And so it works okay with that, but we definitely need a long-term solution for those guys to actually get them some help on there. Because I, like I said, I, you know, through the years, I've seen you guys lose so many great firefighters that it just yeah, it's that's a tough one on there. So anyway, thank you for your time and good luck on trying to figure it out. It's stuff. You know, if you look at those other cities, the law enforcement budget mirrors the fire department budget, the counties and city. And Siskiyou County as a whole, and the city is not alone. The county is an exact same boat. They don't support far departments the way they should be able to staff them adequately. And that's why it's so tough to be able to get volunteers. We have some volunteer outfits that have like two firefighters. That's it. And so that's tough. No, I have eighteen right now. And I think I can count on maybe five that show up. And I'm good with that. Five's enough. But you gotta keep that higher number to keep them there. And you know, I'm nowhere near what the city's calls are. And anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, last we'll hear from Chief Jason Vella from Montague.
Thank you. Good evening. I know most of you guys have been in the fire service for twenty-four years. I've been chief of Montague since two thousand and five. We going through a lot of struggles. Our call volume has has jumped significantly. I mean, we're only running five hundred and fifty calls. And we're already looking into the process of how to get paid personnel at five hundred calls a year. Because I I've seen what they're going through. I see other departments, what they're going through. I travel a lot up and down the state with my state job. I have lots of connections throughout the entire state. I deal with lots of different cities and deal with other departments just because it's my passion. I fire department's always been a passion and volunteer. I get paid a very small stipend to do what I do. Some things that Chief Paulard touched on is paid versus PD versus fire department budgets. So I don't need to talk about that. A lot of volunteers here, we always ask your, I always ask my guys, what is your why? Why do you do this? Why do you want to be on council? Why do you want to be a firefighter? It's so demanding of a job. My wife, as I've recently married since past five years, it is very tough. I I've been very dedicated to it. It's I've been married to the fire service longer than I've been married to my wife. It's just, it is a full-time job. I I put in probably well over forty hours a week just on that as along with my full-time job. But I do it because I love it. I think the public deserves it. The people need it. And they need that dedication. And Work City definitely has those people in there. But it takes a toll on everybody, even in Montague. It it you wouldn't think that it's that busy, but we go to such a array of calls. As you can see, even one of the charts in the last few years, we've had more fires lately than we've had than we have in the past. And we've had a lot of bad calls. Like you, Mr. Stanshaw said, you know, infants, we've had more people dying in fires lately. And there's lots of things that contributes to that. And we need to make sure that we're staying on top of training with that. As chief officers, we are held liable as Chief Lemus had the 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 slide up there for personal liability. Need strong leadership in the fire department. And that stands at the command staff level, whether it be a chief, assistant chief, and then you need to get other officers in there to make sure that we're all following the the processes the states require us. I don't even want to get started on the Cal OSHA stuff. I've been hitting that hard. I'm like I said, I'm very dedicated to that and educating other fire departments throughout that through through throughout the entire county. I've been on the vice president for the chief association for quite some time now. I don't even remember how long. But we've worked on lots of things. The steering committee within the chief's association, we've brought in insurance boards. We've talked with other fire departments. We've done lots of things in the chief's association. We've gotten training here. We try to do that to to take the burdens off the chief, you know, to try to help everybody. But that only goes so far. A lot of the members of Warrick City Fire Department have been part of this training as we've offered. Lots of different things that we offer at the at the chief at the fire warden level at Cal Fire, working with county fire and making sure that things are taken care of there. But the cost of everything is going up. Measure H is a great thing. I remember I was working on the ambulance at the time when that when that passed. And it was, it's a huge deal. But the problem with measure eight, it's not a problem. It's a good thing that they have is is the equipment. Right now, I just had to buy twenty-five sets of turnouts for for my new firefighters. We have twenty-seven firefighters. I'm very blessed to have that many. But like I said, I can count on probably ten or twelve of those guys to be there all the time for fires on medicals, you know, three or four. I'm very blessed, but we don't have the call volume that they do. But dealing with the cost of everything, a new type one engine, if you get one right now, you're talking three quarters of a million dollars. You know, they have to replace the truck in a couple of years. You're over two million. I built the station twenty years ago on prevailing wage, as you guys are very familiar with, was almost six hundred thousand dollars just for a metal building and some stick stuff. We had to do the rest as volunteers. That was twenty years ago. You're not getting in the new station with all the new requirements is with exhaust and and clean bays and you know, not keeping certain equipment has to be in certain areas and and stuff that you're supposed to have this days. We're just trying to retrofit the stuff that we have. And that's just, it's just the cost is just astronomical. So as you guys know, the cost of things is going up. I I could sit here and talk. I mean, a stick of hose for fifty feet is a hundred and eighty dollars. A nozzle is twelve hundred dollars. I can go on and on about this stuff. SCBAs, I just had to purchase twenty of them. Hundred and fifty thousand dollars for twenty SCBAs. Luckily, my fire protection district has money stashed away this, so we could able to purchase that or else we wouldn't be where we're at because we're out. We can try for grants, which we're doing. Can try for staffing grants, which we are going to do in Montague. But that only gets you so far. And there's always a match component to these grants. That doesn't solve the issue of purpose at hand. I worked in dispatch for Cal Fire for ten years. And I can tell you, I've taken those calls. I've taken the hard calls. I've taken some funny calls. But it, we can't differentiate between two different two different things. It it's so hard, even though there's an EMD system in place. Even if you did do that, looking at the call volume, and and I've done my own analysis, you're talking only getting rid of maybe a hundred calls. Honestly, and at that point, when someone calls nine-one-one, as you as a council feel good that saying, well, no, you guys can't go to those nine-one-one calls if it's this thing. If you can honestly sleep at that and knowing that, as we know, that sometimes those calls turn into general illness calls, been on a million times. CPR in progress, full-on stroke. We ask the certain questions when we're doing those as dispatchers to try to, at the best knowledge, to try to get as much information as we possibly can. They truly do that. But sometimes when you're called nine-one-one, I don't know if you ever had to call nine-one-one. It's very hard. Sometimes you don't think of everything. You're very worked up. Your adrenaline's going. When you're calling nine-one-one, it could be the very first time they've called and it's be the worst day of their life. There's so many different things they're thinking about. They're not thinking clearly. So how much on face value are you gonna take at that? So we can't really ask, I I would not definitely ask somebody to be like, well, I don't want you to respond to certain types of calls. It's just the culture of everybody has changed. EMS has become the new issue worldwide. You know, there's, there's, there's programs out there in Los Angeles City and in some other cities that they're running clinics that have fire engines now. It's it's unbelievable of what they're doing and where the culture has gone. It's just, it's changed. It's completely changed. Even in Little Among you wouldn't think it would. Homeless population absolutely changes. But it doesn't matter. They're still a human being. They still deserve some type of treatment, you know? We always have, you know, sometimes it's it's very frustrating. We get that and go on repeat offenders. But at the end of the day, we try to get them home. The system and the meta-health system is there's something wrong with mental health in this group. We all know that. And but we, as myself, I sat on a call for two hours last night doing, because law enforcement took over fifty minutes to get there. They're gonna clear. It was just a basically mental health therapy session for for the individual. We got them the help they needed, but the system's broke. Like Chief Paul said, he he went on calls how many times, you know, forty calls to the same person? And tried to get, and that's with filling out the paperwork with behavioral health and the state and doing everything with the county. It takes time for this stuff to happen. You're still gonna get the repeat offenders. I know Chief Lemus has had to do that same thing. I've had to do it. All chiefs in the county at certain times have had to deal with that. It's just, we have to wait for the system. It's unfortunate that it takes that long, right? Inspections, fire code, all that other stuff. That's at a different admin level. Those things that that need to be done there on a on a bigger level. That hopefully that's being taken care of at some point. But that's also something to think about when you're doing staffing and stuff like that. Those are all certain things to think about. I know the city of Montague is looking at certain things. We're possibly going down that road because there's certain there's so many inspections that we're supposed to be doing a year. And we can't even meet that. As a volunteer department, it's just, that's a whole nother admin side of it. That's a, it just requires more time in the day that we don't have. There's a lot of other departments, you know, you got Williams Fire Department, you got Mount Shasta, even in the own county. And we have finally that you guys were able to get a paid chief. You know, there's other, you know, Dunsmere's had a paid chief for a while, like Chastina, Wheat City. Those are just local departments, you know, but we got city of Ione, you know, city of Jackson, all similar in size, you know, Susanville, talked to those guys yesterday. They're completely staffed, well, two O staff during the day with a paid chief. You know, and those guys have been that way for a while. So it's just a different culture that we finally got to get up to. I'm glad I commend you guys for trying to look at the next step and trying to move forward with this. Like I said, mental health is a huge thing and fatigue and mental health on firefighters is huge, unfortunately. Even in in my own department, we've had to have some firefighters that had to go out on on mental health stuff. Like it's just the things that we see and that we have to deal with now. You know, in the car wrecks and and just a normal day-to-day call. We don't know what's gonna trigger. We have to take care of our own people and volunteers, and that's hard. And employers, they can't. I mean, as an employer, how how do you feel to let your guys go like? You know, as the city knows, it's a lot to even let your own people go. It's like, well, in the middle of fixing a water main. Well, what's more important, you know, for the public works guys that have had that? In in ambulance, the ambulance covers the huge part of the county. They they it's it's Warricka City is the busiest department in the county, but they also have other areas they cut. You know, they carry from basically the Oregon border all the way down to Klamath River to the mouth of Scott, all the way out to, you know, May ten area and my area everywhere else. I mean, they only have two ambulance here in the north county and they have two in the south county. You know, three technically, depending on the day. It's a very busy system. It's just not Warricka that's busy. It's the entire system that's busy. So sometimes, you know, it it just compounds. I looked at getting, I was very frustrated with the ambulance service. I worked on an ambulance for a very long time. We actually looked at getting in a box and staffing our own. And then looking at the new ambulance rates and talking with several people throughout the state that run paramedic programs and stuff like that. I don't know if that's a thought, but I would highly go against it, especially with now with the new Medicare rates and everything else that they tried to get for reimbursement rates. It's down. You you talk to all the different ambulance companies. It is so hard to get reimbursement nowadays, even outsourcing. You know, paying two percent to outsource for insurance and have somebody do all this stuff in the billing. It's still not worth it. At the end of the day, it's getting very, it's getting, they're tightening the screws down on them. So many more requirements. We we were seriously going down that road. I did a deep dive and did, and it just even at our call volume. Even looking at the city of Etna, they did full-time paid staff for a while. And now they're back to just one person because it just wasn't the cost benefit wasn't there for them. They couldn't do it. And not that they don't run as many calls here, but it's just there's so much capital that you have to put forward to even think about going there before you start seeing any returns. And then the capital that you would have to start with, it it would take twenty, thirty years before. And it's just not cost beneficial from my research. But I do commend you guys to looking at the next steps forward. Definitely, as I've told Mr. Ledbetter, I've known for a while now. So definitely need to get a new station. Hundred percent on that and and staffing as well. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Just before I turn it back over to Jason, I just want to thank all the speakers. I mean, as Paul Harvey says, now you know the rest of the story. So a lot of good information there. Thanks for hanging in there. I know it's a lot, but appreciate it because and thank all you guys and gals. Appreciate it.
Thank you, chief, and everybody who's came up and spoke. We appreciate it. It's your lead better.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Warricka City Council. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. I first just want to say, holy smokes. There's some legends of firefighting in Siskiyou County in the house tonight here. And so to hear from them has been, I mean, and I I'm dead serious. And then ultimately too, we have some younger folks that are, I mean, responding to fourteen calls in one day. But I wanted to point out somebody just in particular because he was employed here when I first started. And that's Josh. I mean, that was an incredible talk that you just gave. But I want to say that you are on that bar graph. I know you're on that bar graph. I know that you are one of those people. And based off the number you said, I think that you're number one in that year. And I want to point out, because I know the council's aware, but Josh is now the city manager in Fort Jones. So which congratulations, but ultimately, so it's incredible that you are the machine that's here tonight. But it only takes one or two instance instances in someone's personal life where all of a sudden we don't have them here anymore and we're looking to replace them. And I think Mr. Paul pointed it out very well that ultimately you get these folks that are dedicated and very good, and then they burn out. And then you gotta go find someone else rather than just resolving the issue. So thank you very much. So if we can go back to the slideshow, that's perfect. So ultimately, you know, the fire department's here to talk about the problem and the possible solutions to those problems. And I'm gonna go over some of those things. But it's not their job to figure out the funding. That's city hall's job and that's city council's job. And so that's what That's city hall's job and that's city council's job. And so that's what we're going to kind of start discussing here as we go through this slideshow. So if we can move to the next slide. So back in October of twenty twenty two, staff, Ms. Hogan brought a resolution forward. And it was passed by the city council that created the ad hoc committee. And so we had council member McCoy, and at the time I think it was Mayor Keg. They attended all of the meetings that we had with multiple people inside the chambers here today. Myself, the assistant city manager, multiple staff members from the fire department, volunteers past and present. And multiple staff members, including the chief of Waicata Police Department. We had Mr. Vella here, State OES. We had CAL FIRE, South Waicata Fire, Montague Fire, the Quebec Emergency Preparedness Staff. Siskiyou County Supervisor Ogren, who I believe is here this evening, attended multiple meetings. We had Fairchild Hospital Administrative Staff, and we also had Madrone Hospital Staff. And our goal was to find out what our problem was and what our opportunities for solutions were. So if you can move to the next slide, please. So what did we find out? Well, overwhelmingly, everybody told us we needed paid staff. So right off the bat, why do we need paid staff? So digging into that, which you heard tonight, medical call increases. General fire response, and then ultimately just dealing with training volunteers, dealing with the medical response. It leaves a gap for other services that we need to supply to the community, doing inspections, doing plan checks on new development. So a fire marshal is needed as well. Or someone to do fire inspections under the, the fire chief that we have as the fire marshal. We also heard that we need a new fire hall, that we have a facility that is pretty well aged. We're losing space for equipment in that technically we need space for the desired staffing level that we, we require. And then we also heard that we have some opportunities and defensible space, working with the Waicata Fire Safe Council, George Jennings and Jay Perkins. We had grant opportunities. So we were immediately able to go after some grant opportunities and we were lucky enough. To get this OES Resiliency Officer Grant. I believe we're getting very close to possibly getting somebody in that position here over the next month, hopefully. Next slide, please. But ultimately, we had to kind of boil things down to what is the problem? What can we kind of convey? And so starting to put that statement together. Ultimately, we know that emergency calls have increased by a factor of fifteen. And we know that eighty percent of these calls are not fire related. They're medical related. So since nineteen ninety, calls for service have increased from just over a hundred to over two thousand. And since nineteen ninety, volunteers have decreased from over forty one to below twenty two. Next slide. So we came to the council and on four eighteen of twenty twenty three with resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty one. The city council passed this resolution, giving us authority to go out and find a polling consultant. And so we did that and we polled the community and we asked them a, a number of questions, but two of them stand out here and I want to read these to you. So the Waicata Fire Chief is a paid professional. What about the other Waicata firefighters? Are they all paid firefighters? Are some paid and some volunteers, or are they all volunteers? So ultimately only five percent thought, well, they're all paid. But forty four percent thought that some were paid, which I found to be rather interesting. So there is a disconnect in the community to understand that those coming to an emergency are technically volunteers. And they are not collecting a salary. This is not their full time job. So the city on some level has let down a level of education to explain to the community that we are a volunteer fire department. And we were lucky enough before I got on board here that we had the opportunity to fill a fire chief position. And that's how we ended up gaining here Chief Lemos as our first, our first paid fire chief. So the next question that's really interesting right below that. Now that you know more about the one percent sales tax increase to improve public safety and other essential services in the city of Waicata. If the election were held today on this measure, would you vote yes in favor of it or no to oppose it? And so ultimately we have sixty six percent of the population. When not really quite understanding everything that we're talking about here tonight, ultimately came out and said, yeah, that sounds reasonable. I would support something like that. So I'm giving you this information ultimately. Because we are leading to a funding mechanism. That's my job is to figure out how to solve this problem with, with revenue. And so we are going to come to you and just kind of showcase that we have reached out to the community. We do have data. We have an understanding of how the community feels about the fire department and their willingness to fund such a venture. But it doesn't guarantee anything ultimately. And if we do move in this fashion, it truly would be up to the community to decide what they value as far as city services. Next slide, please. So when I got on board here, the city had reached out for a community development block grant in twenty twenty two to the tune of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this money was going to be used to start site planning and engineering a new fire hall design for the city of Waicata. Ultimately, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, not a huge amount of money to do a lot of engineering. But we did get this grant and we started down the process and we hired a company called NMR, who's built a number of fire halls in the state of California. And ultimately they say to us, well, what is your facility? What is your needs? What personnel or do you have employed twenty years from now? And so going through this process with Mr. Anzo and Chief Lemos and Jay Perkins and DJ and a number of other people on the department. This organizational chart was created with really the most idealistic look at how we can. Resolve our issues. And so this is based off the National Fire Protection Association standard. And so this is the ultimate goal. This is your true, true solution. I just want you to take a look on the right hand side in the circle. That's all your EMS. So that would be all your medical response, folks, that we would say, yes, we're hiring all of these people. And these folks are going to respond only to medical. Next slide, please. So ultimately what we found out was not very shocking to us, but we can't afford this. This is, uh, uh, this does not include the EMS response. And already we're looking at four point six million dollars. Now we can say, okay, we have a paid chief, so let's remove that. That gets us closer to four point two million dollars, because these are benefit positions. We're going to utilize the highest step so that we're not dealing with possibly when we do, if we were to move forward and hire folks. We always want to have the worst case scenario on how much money we're going to spend. So immediately we know this true, true solution to resolve this problem is absolutely unattainable for the city of Waicata, in my opinion. Because of a funding issue. But the, the project or really the prompt was to help us design the fire hall. We needed to know how much space we needed. So we needed to know what the organizational chart looked like. Because where were these people going to be housed in a new facility? Next slide, please. And so we have kind of a mock up here from NMR. And ultimately, we've also been given a cost from NMR on the going rate of construction for fire halls in the state of California. And that is a thousand dollars per square foot. And so ultimately, if you look at this build out here that would suffice to an organizational chart that we showed you before. You're looking at about twenty three million dollars just for a fire hall. Once again, that seemed relatively unattainable within our opportunities for revenue. Next slide. So we went back to Cameron Wees Bond Council and we said, hey, can you run some numbers for us? Ms. Hogan did this for us and we said, hey, what's debt servicing look like on a fifteen million dollar fire hall over forty years? And what's debt servicing look like on a twenty three million dollar build out over forty years? And so we have some examples here. So if we were to try to build a twenty three million dollar fire hall. We're going to debt service roughly one point two, one point one million dollars annually for forty years. And if we're going to build a fifteen million dollar fire hall, we're looking at a more reasonable. You know, three quarter of a million dollars that we would be debt servicing. And so that's part of this exercise is not only to tear the Band-Aid off and tell the city council. In a public meeting, something that I think they've known for a while, there's an issue at the fire hall. This is not new, but this is the first time that really the issue has been brought forward. And really a positive discussion hopefully can be had about how we want to go about approaching this. But somewhere in between fifteen and twenty three million dollars is a possible build out and a possible engineered plan. But we can't move forward at this moment without better direction from the city council with NMR. Because it would be pointless to design something that we have no mechanism to find in the future. So that has been put on pause at the moment. Next slide, please. So I know we talk a lot about Measure H and we talk a lot about a volunteer fire department. And when you look annually, Measure H is now bringing in roughly three hundred thousand dollars a year. We heard from a lot of firefighters on how that is utilized and just the escalating costs of these rigs to fight fire. And so ultimately, there is a ten year plan that Chief Lemos and some prior volunteers had worked on. Just a replacement of equipment plan. And this money is really spoken for, more than spoken for, quite frankly. So when we come to you and we look at buying rigs for the fire department, anywhere in the, you know, quarter of a million, up to three quarter of a million or more. That's where this funding is coming from. It's coming directly from Measure H. And really, they've done right by it. The volunteers have just never allowed that money to be utilized in any other fashion. Legally, it's not able to be utilized in any other fashion, but they were also adamant, I think, in the past that it was equipment. They needed equipment and that was the best use of this funding. But then the general fund, we give seven hundred thousand dollars over to YFD. So for a volunteer fire department, they do make up a million dollars of our general fund, which is roughly nine million dollars. So we talk about volunteer fire department, but I want people to understand, especially the city council. But that doesn't mean it's free at the moment for us. We have the upkeep of the buildings. We have other equipment that has to get purchased. And so ultimately, your current budget for YFD ranges anywhere from eight hundred thousand to a million dollars annually. Next slide. So I personally feel that we, I agree with many statements that were made here, that we need a level of paid staff. And this is an opportunity to look at a build out of a building. And that was a task that the prior city council gave the staff. That's why we got the CDBG money to start that investigation. And so ultimately, we have to look at and present to city council, what are the options for funding? And so Measure H is a prime example of a property assessment. When you get your bill or, or technically you're paying that bill through the water bill. But ultimately, what this means is that that money is very dedicated. And so right now, a property assessment would be probably relatively difficult, in my opinion, to pass through. The public here in the city of Waicata. The next option is, I think, the most lucrative and probably if we do move forward with wanting to attain some level of funding for paid staff in a new fire hall, probably the most reasonable. And that's a one percent sales tax. So looking at the history of the last couple of years. We can say that somewhere between two point four and two point nine million dollars would be brought in on a one percent sales tax if we were to start that. In, in the next year. You know, we've heard a lot about insurance recovery billing and we definitely think we should look into that. We think that's a huge opportunity for us, but we want to be realistic. And so I have not had the opportunity to reach out to McLeod or Reading. But internally, what we've discussed is we think that would probably garner us about a hundred thousand dollars before the cost to do the billing. And so ultimately, I want you to think about this for a minute, because anyone that stepped foot in an ambulance recently, and I could say I have, has been tasked with this. If we have insurance recovery billing, when someone responds to you needing a medical attention. They're going to respond with a clipboard and they're going to ask you to sign some documentation, thereby allowing the city to bill your insurance. And so the same thing happens when you step foot inside of a, an ambulance. Is you're disillusioned, right? You need help. And so ultimately you're signing whatever is given to you, but ultimately I want you guys to consider how members of the public may feel. If the city of Waicata were to show up on an incident and the first thing we hand someone is a clipboard for them to sign so we can build our insurance. Ultimately, we have the opportunity to go after safer grants. Those were discussed here tonight by Chief Vella. And we'd like to do that, but the reason we don't do that now is that these are stepped grants. First year is a hundred percent funded. The following year continues to step down until after a few years, the city is responsible for a hundred percent of the salary of that employee. Now, if we were to move forward, and this is, this is, no decision's going to be made here tonight. I just let everybody know that right off the bat. But as we have more meetings and if it is decided to move forward and we are successful with getting some revenue. We're definitely going to go after safer grants. We're going to subsidize our ability of the money coming in to maybe refocus some of that funding to go to a build out of a facility. But right now, a safer grant with no funding mechanism doesn't make a lot of sense, because ultimately, long term. It really just turns into a general fund line item on the budget. And then ultimately, I think, you know, we've heard a little bit tonight as well. Redistributing of the current general fund budget. I just don't know how reasonable that is to get to an area that we can take out. Enough money and redistribute or reallocate to YFD. That helps solve their problem without really destroying some other aspect of the city of Waicata. So I don't really recommend that as a very lucrative option either. Next slide, please. And so ultimately, I advocate that we really should consider if we want to fund a solution with paid, some level of paid staff. Which is not going to be the ideal organizational chart, because there's really no mechanism to bring that level of money or funding into the city of Waicata. Is that we go after a sales tax initiative. I just want to talk about that for a minute, because I think it's democratically appropriate, quite frankly, because there are agreements. Equipment is going out, staff is going out, they're going to South Waicata. And South Waicata is coming into Waicata to help solve some of our issues. As Mr. Paul pointed out on Christmas Day, there was a fire and South Waicata was in town. I'm sure other agencies were in town as well. But who services Hawkinsville? You do. The Waicata Fire Department does, right? And so there's agreements with Montague. They're going to Hawkinsville. It's not just necessarily the city. And I, I just don't think that these, you heard it from these folks, someone calls. And if we tell them not to go and that person dies, nobody can live with that. And so ultimately, it doesn't matter how remedial the call is, they're going to go. And there's really no mechanism to say, I don't think personally, that the city council would say, we'll just stop servicing Hawkinsville. Let's just stop doing that. And so what we have is an opportunity with the sales tax that ultimately, if you're in the sphere of influence of the city of Waicata and you're spending money in this community. Then ultimately it could be put to good use within the sphere of influence to provide a level of service for the fire response. And so I just want to talk about, if we do end up deciding to move forward, I want to put this in the back of your head right now. Is there some key dates? And we heard how dire the issue is. I mean, some people are talking about making a short term solution now. And then dealing with this long term solution that we'll talk about on multiple meetings. So this is a very serious issue. And so I just want you to know that if we do go for a sales tax, I am advocating for the November election, the presidential election here at the end of the year. And I am advocating that you ultimately direct staff to go back and start preparing ballot language. That's not agreeing to vote yes on that. There's an ordinance and we would have to pass. That ordinance obviously would have to get a first hearing and a second reading. But we would have to take that language and send it to the state and double check with CD TFA that it's legal language. And so we have these very specific timelines that we would like to meet. And we'd like to do that somewhere around March first through the fifteenth. We're also advocating that if you did decide to move forward in this fashion, that you would have a first reading of this ordinance for a ballot initiative on March nineteenth. And then you would have a second reading on April second. This gives us a bit of a buffer. When we went through this process on the pool, there was some miscommunication with the county. We also dealt with the state, some of the dates that we thought were further out. Turned out we were notified later on that they were closer and we were very lucky to be able to come forward and still have a meeting available. Because you cannot have a special meeting to determine a sales tax initiative or a tax initiative. So I just want you guys to think about if you do want, if you do want to move forward to solve this problem. And that's another thing that I want to say. You don't have to. The point of this exercise is to tell you that there's a problem. And I think taking it out to the And I think taking it out to the people with the sales tax initiative doesn't get any more democratic than that. And they can tell us no. And then they could tell us they don't value this service at this level. And then that would be the end of this story. But ultimately, it doesn't stop this problem from existing. And not bringing an issue forward because we're scared to talk about it in public or we're not, we're scared to talk about what the solution is, that's a disservice to this community because ultimately, it really is up to the community as to whether or not they value this level of service. And so I just want to advocate to you, you could have a different solution and we will go entertain that solution. We will take advice from you or you can just disagree with this as being a solution. And that's totally fine, too. I'm not up here telling you what you have to do. I'm just advising you based off of what the issue is and what you can do to solve this problem. Next slide. And so ultimately, here tonight, what I'd like you guys to discuss and give direction on is I'd like to have two workshops in the month of February. I think Ms. Baker pointed out, maybe in a finance committee meeting, to stagger these, right? To offer them at different times. So can we have one in the morning or you guys can discuss that if you would like to move forward with this? And just present this same slideshow that we had tonight to different members of the community that may be able to make a different meeting. I'd also like you to direct staff and the city attorney to prepare ballot language for a 1% sales tax initiative to be voted on by the Waireka City Council in March of 2024. And then I'd like to prepare documentation and slideshow for the next meeting based on feedback and direction that we get from the council. Maybe you guys have an alternative solution or you'd like to hear more about one of the issues or hear flesh out what other options look like or get more information. If you could please kind of direct us and then we will add that to the slideshow that we would come back and give at one of these special meetings. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. All right. Wow. A lot of great information and I know we've been working on this for a long time, so, but I will, I have my opinion, but I'm going to go ahead and open up to the council for discussion and what their thoughts are. We'd like to go first. Counselman Keg.
Well, I just want to thank everybody for all their input. I mean, Chief Lemus, all the fire chiefs and everybody for putting all the effort into this. I mean, we're involved, Paul McCoy, I were involved this. But I'll tell you what, it's all the firefighters, it's all the guys getting involved in this and letting us know what needs to be done. It's, it's so important and burnout is, it's real, it's a reality and we need to, we need to deal with it. The sales tax, like Mr. Ledbetter is talking about, I totally agree with, with Mr. Ledbetter on that. In the aspect that services, Waireka services goes well beyond just Waireka. We have, if you travel over in the valley, anytime over in the valley and right at 5:00 in the evening or at 7:00 in the morning, you'll see hundreds of people coming over to Waireka, traveling from Scott Valley, coming from, if you go over towards Shastina, same thing. Hundreds of people coming from Shastina, coming into Waireka. So we're not just the local people that should pay for this service. It needs to be the citizens of, of Siski County. I mean, plain and simple, Siski County, this is the core, this is the hub. Waireka is the core and the hub of Siski County. And that shows we have forest service here, we have county, you know, administration buildings here. We have all this, these, these people come from Scott Valley, they come from Hawkinsville, they come from different areas, Montague. And so this services needs to be extended from all over. So sales tax only to me makes the most logical sense because everybody needs us. If we don't have a fire department, we lose that fire department, then what do we have in Waireka? All these, we can have all these forest service buildings, we can have all these things, but they burned down, what good is it? So the citizens of Siski County needs to step up and pay for this. Yeah, there'll be a lot of people that doesn't agree with the sales tax, but unfortunately, the state of California has put us in this predicament. If you want to get back to what, what needs to be done, funding needs to come more from the state of California, not just from the citizens. But this is what we got to work with right now. And I think it's a, it's something that's can be achieved. And we need to, we need to support our, our local firefighters, not just for us, but for them, for their families and for all of Siski County. So I mean, I can go into more and more because what has been stated at these meetings is, is so valuable information. These guys have put a lot of their blood, sweat and tears, not just in this presentation, but their whole lives. I mean, I look out there, I see these guys that have been in this, been in services and doing this. And what Mr. Pope was stating, coming, you know, being, being in there, he's probably helped my dad and back in the day, picked him up off the ground. We can't judge who they're going to pick up off the ground and who's going to be that person that they need to get CPR to or it's just a, just a person that needs help off the ground. There's, there's too many people now, times have changed and we can't lose any, like Mr. Paul was saying, we can't afford to lose any of our, our firefighters are too valuable. We've, we've come a long ways and these guys are too valuable for us. So I, I agree with, with Mr. Ledbetter, everything he's stated here, we need to move forward on. I think it's as a council, it just comes down to, we need to figure out the dates and move forward. And so that's all I have to say, let's just figure it out.
Thank you, Counselman Keg. Counselman Davis.
Thank you, Mayor Middleton. Fellas and ladies, I really think your presentation was outstanding. Even Traces, his was really good, too. You're welcome. You know, the fire department needs some help and I would be very happy to try to help that out. I just have a question here, Chief, do we own the lay station?
So to the best of my knowledge, and we could, you know, this is anecdotal and also from history that it's owned by the descendants of the Lay family. They have first right of refusal if we say, well, it's no longer, we don't need it anymore. They get to determine what they're going to do with it. So it's one of those, we can stay there as long as we want, but once we don't want it or need it, then it reverts back to their ownership. That's what I, that's what I know. And we probably need to verify that at some point as we go through this to make sure, read the fine print, so.
I think I heard that, but I wasn't sure. Thank you, Chief.
There's one other thing I had to ask. The training that is required of your firefighters, you have listed on one of your pages here. Is that annually or is that once?
That's initially, and then there's refresher training that, that is required. Now, that's like you can add up the firefighter one, firefighter two, first aid, hazmat, all the things that really are required by, by state law for them to be quote unquote a firefighter. And then so 550 hours that was in there. I mean, are they going to get that in their first year? No. I mean, that's going to take some time for them to do that. But you know, we do the very best we can and Chiefs can back me up on that, but.
You, you bring those folks in from outside or from the colleges, the Siskys?
A myriad of all, all the above. Some come from the college with their firefighter one, sometimes they have more than that, firefighter two sometimes, not very often. But generally, or we get them their, their certificates through training in our, in our department. So most of ours come with no experience and we train them.
I'm really ignorant here. Explain to me what a firefighter one is.
It's a level of training. It has, it's a, it's a more basic firefighter, one is more basic. So you give them training on ladders, hose deployment, nozzles, things of that nature, they're very basic. And then firefighter two gets more in-depth with fire behavior and things of that nature. Yeah, it's more, it's more technical, but they're definitely attainable for most individuals. Explain that good, guys? It's the minimum, correct?
That's just a start, that's the minimum training. Right.
Yes.
Thank you, Jason.
They have the experts here in the front row for a reason.
He came up with those figures like that, man. That's good.
All right, so I, I think using all of these things, Mr. Mayor, I think we should try to proceed forward and do so with the sales tax initiative as possible.
All right. Thank you, Counselman Davis. Counselman Baker.
Thank you. Thank you just does not seem to be a big enough statement. You guys are the backbone of this community. And my guess is that at some point in time, your department has touched each of our lives in one way or another. And thank you. And having said that, I am extremely supportive of growing the fire department. But I also, but I also think that as a city council, we need to make sure that all of our bases are covered. And so I know that I brought this up at a finance committee meeting, but had that ad hoc committee considered any other options for the new fire hall as an example, either remodeling the lay station or adding in addition to the lay station versus building an entire new facility?
Yeah, I think that we, we haven't really discussed that, but I think that ultimately, we could easily have that discussion. If that's something that we can look into for you on the next, when we come back at another workshop, we definitely can go get numbers. We can talk, talk to our engineering firm. One thing that did come up through the process of working with a different engineering firm on a different project within this space when we were really moving on trying to design redoing the space that we're in, was just the fact that how cheaper, how much cheaper it was to build something brand new. But I think that what you're saying is kind of like, is there a way to have an outbuilding possibly that suffices a level of growth and then still utilize lay station? I think that that may be the case, but I also, and we can investigate, but I just off the, off the cuff here, based off of like a building being 50 years old is like the lifespan, is that it is pretty obvious that both sides of the building are past their prime and that ultimately, they don't meet a lot of the safety standards. And I would guess they don't meet a lot of the fire build out standards that technically we would be shooting for. But we certainly can investigate that and we'll go back to NMR and kind of gauge what that, what they would think that would look like. And then we'll put that into the, this is great, this is exactly what we want. We'll put that into the slideshow. And so we want more of this type of feedback because I think we want to be able to answer these questions because we know more people from the public are going to come forward with similar questions. So anything you can give us now really kind of helps us be more productive at the next meeting.
Thank you. As, and in addition to that, have you guys looked at any kind of hybrid models for manning the fire departments as an example? Perhaps contracting out to CAL FIRE to have that agency man the department a certain number of hours a week? Because I know all these additional full-time staff positions are going to be pretty costly to the city now and also the unfunded mandates of the retirement and ongoing insurance. And so I would like to see kind of a model of, of half and half. I would love to pay everybody. We've just have to figure out the funding for doing that and maybe looking at a little bit broader picture. I'd like to see that as well.
Yeah, that's great. So if I'm hearing correctly, I think that there might be two things here that we can do. And one of them would be what is just the general mixed staff look like? Because ultimately, we are advocating for a mix of volunteers and paid staff. And then we could very easily contact CAL FIRE and get a price or a quote on, or what their flexibility even looks like on contracting services, just to have that within the, the next slideshow.
Thanks. And then one other thing, have, has the city also at some point ever considered a safety department that consists of both YPD and the fire department together? And would that ultimately be a more cost-effective model for the future than two separate departments? And I don't even know, Mr. Ledbetter, how you would begin to look at that, but these are the things that have come to mind tonight.
Yeah, you're not off base here. That's a model on the East Coast, I think a few people have. And I think that Chief Gilman brought it to our attention when I first started, that I think Sunnyvale may have an actual, like there's an overlap or there's like you're a firefighter and you're a police officer. We can gather more information on that as well and probably talk to some outfits and just get a better understanding whether or not that's feasible for us.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And again, it's because, you know, if we're going out to the public, I think that we, you know, the better prepared we are to answer questions, the sooner we can get going on this.
Yeah, I think you're dead on. I mean, I think that there's a limited number of folks in the crowd tonight. A lot of them are with the fire department. But as we tune up and, and start promoting, because we're going to start promoting the idea of getting people into more meetings and hearing back. And that's one thing that I do want to talk about is if we can get some dates, I'd like to have a different style meeting and I'd like to have more of a town hall Q and A style meeting where folks in the audience can actually ask questions to the fire department and to city staff, just to be more inclusive. And so that's my goal for the, the follow-up workshop meetings.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselman Baker. Counselman Pro Tim McCoy.
Thank you very much for the presentation. It's wonderful. Jerry and Drake, first month I was, came on as a councilman. What I, I had, I've got several things that I really would like to see, not necessarily while I'm on here, but to go. One of them was a fire hall, the lay station, yes, I've seen the documentation. It belongs to the Lay family and once the city is done with it, it reverses to the Lay family unless they don't want it. So it does not belong to the city and I have the documentation on my phone from the title company. And I, I am in agreement with the councilwoman that it would be nice to look at. I think it's going to be more expensive to remodel, it is in my home anyway, but I think it'd be nice to look at that. I know that at one point, we did talk about the park next door and taking that out, whether or not we're, I'm just saying, I'm just, you know, taking that out and then building over there. The dilemma with remodeling is that you're going to have to build and, you're going to have to build some semblance of a fire hall somewhere else. But it's a, it's a good idea. I would like to perhaps just throw out there the idea of subsidizing the ambulance also for, so that they will make calls. I remember in 87, I was living up on the stilts, my dad had a stroke. I didn't call, I called the ambulance immediately, they responded. I think a YPD officer Frost responded. But I mean, obviously that you got, we didn't start till I think you said 90 or something like that with white, with the fire department responding and, and they didn't. And I'm not saying that's good or bad. What I'm saying is I know that there was a time when it was easier for you guys and the gals that are there, so. And I know those you young folks like, like, like Fireman Pope, you've really youngsters, you know, you're, you're doing a great job out there. Anyway, yeah, I think those would be the only thing I would say. I would, and I've shared this with other people, but I would say that with a sales tax, if we were to do a sales tax, roughly somewhere, I think around just say 60 cents out of every dollar, probably doesn't come from Waireka citizen, comes from a citizen outside of the city. So I mean, to me, that seems fair. You know, I, I mean, and again, don't, don't quote me, I'm, I'm not saying that's, you know, gospel, but anyway, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Counselman McCoy. First off, that's like. I've watched the fire department over the years, being actually a teenager, a little kid, or even when I worked, my first started real estate at Bob Minton's office. BJ's dad was there and so I watched him get calls and leave when his buzzer go off. And then, you know, I was good friends, still good friends with Denise Crawford, so Larry Crawford and all the old time firefighters that been there throughout the years. So it makes me kind of sad when I go to the fire, fire hall and seeing the pictures and some that are not with us, but seeing the dedication that they. They made and seeing the dedication you guys still have to continue that fire department, but had a way less staff. And I was even saying how I don't know how you guys do it with, seeing the pictures before with. The staff and Trace was there as well and just seeing that deep fleet and volunteering, whether it be fire department or anywhere in the community. Nobody wants to volunteer anymore. And so it's very sad, but I give you guys. Kudos, I give you my heartfelt thank you. As Councilman Baker said, it doesn't seem like it's enough. The only time I'm getting up at night is because I have an older dog who wants to get up five times a night and then I can't get back to sleep and. So that's the only time I'm getting up is with him, but not responding to a call, I couldn't imagine, so thank you. I am full, I'm in full support of going forward with the sales tax. I am in full support of going forward with the dates at an aggressive level, so we don't miss our deadlines, the sooner the better. I don't want to miss the ballot measure, I don't want to have it solved and legal or, you know, make sure that wording, because I know it's going to have to probably come back and things would have to be changed. So I'm in support of full. Blown, you know, blown ahead going forward and just making sure that we get it done and not stall and miss it this year. Because the time's wasting and the time is now, why the momentum, I think, is here. And I do hope when we have the other meetings for the community that as many as the volunteers can come out and speak and tell their stories too. So the community is informed because they're not informed, you know, as you can see by the chart. I guess my concern, only concern is, is I guess before we remodel and put millions of dollars into the lay station, which I would like to look at that cost, but to make sure we own that property before we put millions of dollars into it. And it's occupied and then we give it back again to the Lay family, you know, in a few years, since we don't own it right now. Is it putting a million, you know, millions of dollars into probably the same as a new fire hall, just because of the age and the retrofit of the building. Is I would want to make sure they did it over to us or we purchased it before we hand them a $25 million remodels to the fire department go out after, you know, a few years or, you know, retrofit. But yeah, I give you full direction and just with the staff or with the council people here to move forward and. Just picking the dates. And let's get it done, hopefully.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. And I just want to thank not only everybody here tonight, but I want to thank the city council because I think that this can be a difficult subject matter. And I think that past councils before you maybe weren't ready to address this. And so I, I thank you for listening, providing feedback for the next meeting. And then I'll just reiterate that ultimately we have kind of, the next item would be your opportunity to give direction on the sales tax measure. So we've moved it to item 10, that you've already seen the presentation and that we're advocating for you to, this is not a vote on, we're doing the sales tax. This is a vote on, we are directing you to go do the, directing staff to go do the language to bring back at a later date that would be voted on. And then also too, if it's comfortable with the council, unless someone has specific dates, then we will work internally and contact each of you and come up with some dates in February that work for everybody. And then get those, we want to get those advertised and out as soon as possible, so we'll be in touch by the end of the week, if that's okay.
Yes. And then before we move to item number 10, Councilman McCoy does have one question for you.
Mr. Ledbetter, I mean, I know you're, you're saying that these dates are somewhat fluid on, on the sales tax initiative, the one through 15th review, the 19th first reading and the second. You're saying those are somewhat fluid?
Yeah, a little bit. I mean, we're, we're wanting to make sure that we safeguard ourselves from issue with maybe the verbiage not being correct. Issue with coming to the first reading and maybe not liking the verbiage and wanting it to get reworded. When you do a measure for revenue, you need to make sure that you are following your protocols dead on. And so, yeah, ultimately, we think there's a little bit of flexibility, but we're requesting these dates just to anticipate something sending us awry and still giving us a buffer.
So that being said, Mr. Mayor, can, can we, it doesn't have to be added on here, but can we add it on to whatever we are directing the city manager to do? That our city attorney, who works for the five of us, does not work for Mr. Ledbetter, that our city attorney would get that language to us a couple of weeks before the March first date? So that we're not taking, so, so that we can look at it and then, and then it can circulate around for another couple of weeks. I, I don't know what his workload is like, is he on the.
He's Mr. Jared still on the line, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, we can achieve that, that timeline. The issue though is how to circulate it and get the council input. And so that, the way that's done is through the, the first reading process.
So, on March 19th, will that be the first time that city staff and city council will see that document? Mr. Jared?
It wouldn't be the first time city staff sees it. It would be the first time, it, I don't have the, the PowerPoint up, let me, let me go to the presentation. So it sounds like what you would want to do is prior to going to CDTFA. Have council input in it, but it's, I mean, it's a whole cart before the horse and it's a, you know, real didactic process here. Do we take it to CDTFA first and get their blessing or do we get your input? And I think that's where the input comes in the. Maybe we could have it at the, the last. I guess the last workshop in February might be the time to roll out the language and comment on it. I, I don't know what Jason, what you were thinking about that.
That would be incredible, Mr. Jared, if that works for the council. I mean, that would be ideal to have kind of language at workshops.
Was it okay with you guys, so there? Council Baker, Councilman Davis, those timeframes.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I, I think that would work that we get language towards the end of February, get blessing on that language as a draft. It's not approving first reading of the ordinance or anything like that.
I understand, yes.
And taking that to CDTFA to get their blessing on it and then coming back for first reading in March 19.
Thank you, Mr. Jared, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
All right, thank you. All right. Okay, so if there's no other questions, we'll move to item number 10. This is the agenda title, or 10A, I'm sorry, agenda title 2024 November ballot measure discussion, the recommended city council actions, the motion direct. City attorney and city staff to expend resources for the developed, this is developed ballot measure. Revenue options for the Wai Rika Fire Department. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'm so moved.
I have the motion for Councilman Baker. I have a second. Oh.
I apologize.
Yeah, it says a motion, that's okay. I'll do a roll call. Got me off track there. Okay, Councilman Keg.
Aye.
Councilman Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Pro Tim McCoy.
Aye.
And Mayor Middleton will be, aye, the motion passes five to zero. All right, thank you. All right, nothing else, then we are going to adjourn. Thank you, everybody for coming and we will be going into close, resuming from our recess for closed session. Yeah. After we take a break.